All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Santa Monica City Council tonight. Is that rare thing both a regular and a special meeting? Mayor Protem Negrete, how about you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Parr?
Here.
Councilmember Brock?
Here.
Mayor Protem Negrete?
Here.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Here.
And Mayor Davis?
Here. And before we get the meeting going, I'm going to ask everyone to silence their phones or put them on vibrate, because otherwise we'll all know what your ringtone is, and you might be embarrassed. All right, let's move on. Madam Clerk, are we calling to order both the regular and special meeting at this point?
Yes.
All right, so we are calling to order both the regular and special meeting of the city council. We'll move on to item number one, which is public input.
So we have public input. Public comment is permitted only on items not listed on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. C. La prohibes the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. And it looks like we have 10 speakers.
All right, I see that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call out a few names. When I call your name, please line up to the wall to your left or right. You'll each have up to two minutes to speak. Please identify yourself by name before you begin speaking, so folks at home know who you are. And I'll call two or three names if you can line up. And then before we get to the last person, we'll call another couple of names, so that way we don't need to have people work their way through the seating. Is it Leonard Burr, Jerry Rubin, Denise Barton, and Brian Bishop? No, Mr. Burr?
Burr-Lenard.
Oh, Burr-Lenard, I'm sorry.
My windows face the Miramar. Experts say that noise travels upwards, and that is why higher floors tend to be noisier. So from my windows, the Unite Here noise is very loud. And that's not the worst thing. The noise is hostile, hateful, piercing, shrill, nasty, militant, and bullying. It jars the nerves and confuses the brain. I've spent many days in my bathtub where I can close the door and the noise is a little less. I cannot have friends over or progress on the book I'm writing. I've developed insomnia because I hear the screaming and drumming in my head. I can't organize my life because I don't know when they're coming. No, this is not just a little bit of disruption, as you once said. And no, moving the strikers to the Miramar entrance does not help. The reason is that the people on the picket line, many of whom, as we all know, are not authentic strikers, amplify the noise electronically. The noise is okay for Wilshire. I don't know what game Unite Here is playing. It posts propaganda about house cleaners need to make more than $81,000 a year plus tips and to live within walking distance from their work. My nephew has an advanced degree in addiction counseling. He worked very hard to get where he is today. He lives in Sherman Oaks, makes $50,000 a year, and drives an old car 25 minutes to work. The average commute to work in this country is 27.6 minutes. But no matter, Unite Here threatens potential hotel guests with dirty rooms and nonstop noise for residents, businesses, and visitors because it says its members must live so close to their job that they can walk to work. I know you support the homeless in Santa Monica. That's truly very admirable. But you clearly do not represent or respect me or many other citizens of this city. And by the way, constitutionally, free speech does not include excessive noise.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Jerry Rubin?
Well, thank you very, very much. Mayor Davis, Mayor Protem Negrete, honorable council members, city manager, city attorney, our working police department, fellow Santa Monicans, and particularly our wonderful city clerk who's retiring, who we're going to miss a lot. She's fantastic. I can't even believe that she's leaving, but want to wish her the best. This past Thanksgiving, I was given a lot of thought to how much gratitude I need to start thinking about, because I think we all kind of shrug off. And I just feel so grateful. I'm going to be 80 years old. I thought I sent out information to you guys, but at the risk of sending it out and announcing it 20 times, I'm just going to say you're all invited. The day before, the new mayor comes in the next day to my party at the Gaslight at 20th and Wilshire Boulevard. Public, free, cake, pizza, have a good time. And when the council, the new mayor comes in, I want to thank Green Davis for being a fantastic mayor. I want to see us work together for win-win solutions, and that should be the highest priority in a great city like Santa Monica. I love all of you. We have so much to be grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Denise Barton?
Good evening. I'd like to speak about the city staff's hybrid work schedule, beginning with the city of Santa Monica's mission, vision, and values. Starting with accountability, we serve the people and departments of the city and take ownership for the work provided. Would a good example of this be David Martin not returning my call until three months later, or my affordable housing being threatened three times within the last year since January by management, with one time being in writing? Teamwork and inclusion, we work to promote a collaborative, open, and respectful workplace focused on opportunity and equity. Would this be why an ADA person for the disabled in the community can still not be found? Excellence, we strive to deliver the highest quality product and services in all endeavors. I know I and others in the community would take issue with this claim, because if the employers are working from home, more often than not, your call isn't answered or returned, and putting the residents and others at the convenience of when the employee is at work while working from home, rather than at the public's convenience, rather than at the convenience of the residents and others' time. Innovation, we identify opportunities to improve the city's support, new ideas and change. Here, I would say the 3-1-1 system would fall into this category, which does not work for the residents and others. And for the high salaries of city employees, I don't think residents and others, except developers, are getting their money's worth. Ownership, we take responsibility for our services and tools. When a user has a problem, we make it our problem and own its resolution. If you cannot get a call back from the city manager, David White, what does that say? And you keep trying to sell the civic sector against the wishes of the residents, showing that the city council puts their interest above that of the community. So with these examples, I do hope you can see that your hybrid work schedule is not working for the public you say you serve.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Brian Bishop. And Mr. Bishop, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names so folks can line up behind you. Rhea Devlue, Anthony Bubbles, and Sarah Lee. Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen of Santa Monica City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'd like to address a concern that affects the residents of the Wilmont area, particularly those close to Lincoln Middle School. It's with heavy heart and urgency that I bring to your attention the issues surrounding the soccer field that have been adversely impacting the quality of life of the residents in this community. First and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge that this community space contributes significantly to the health and the vitality of the city. It's great that it's there. But it affects the residents to the fact that the noise levels, parking challenges, and blinding lights, and disruptive behaviors are reaching a point of a very essence of peaceful community living has been compromised. The onslaught of loud cheers, screaming, and constant activity on the soccer field has become an unwelcome soundtrack to the daily lives of this residents, including myself. I have sleepless nights, my nerves are frayed, and the general sense of frustration have become too common, infringing upon my right as an individual to have peace and quiet in my neighborhood. Moreover, again, the parking issue arises from the events of the soccer field exaggerate an already challenging situation. Residents find it increasingly difficult to park near their homes, and the influx of vehicles adds to congestion, making it inconvenient and sometimes unsafe for both pedestrians and drivers. The bright lights illuminating from the soccer field well into the night further compound these problems. The lights invade the privacy of homes, disturb sleep patterns, and contribute to light pollution, which is not only an aesthetic concern, but also has implications on the health and well-being of those exposed. I stand before you not to criticize, but to appeal for a collaborative effort to find a solution that respects both the rights of recreational users of the soccer field and the residents of the Wilmont area. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Rhea Devlue?
Good afternoon, city council members. I am back here again to speak about the noise ordinance not being on the agenda, which has become extremely important. And these Local 11 people, I call them urban terrorists because that is exactly what they are, waking us up as early as 5:30 or 6:00 a.m. in the morning still, for maybe five or 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, then stopping. That's not free speech. It is called a nuisance. And we have our rights under California Civil Code 3479 to not have this happening. But yet the city hasn't done anything. Beverly Hills didn't tolerate it. I understand a lot of you are endorsed by Local 11 and want the money for your campaigns. But this is over 1,273 residents in the downtown Santa Monica area that are getting sick of this. I had the Wiley Institute come out and measure the decibel levels from where these apartments are, on Second Street, on Third Street, and in that general area. That decibel level from where they are is 142, 130, and it's consistent. So no, it is not just like a passing car going up and down the street. It is actually consistent, and it keeps going on and on. It disrupts our sleep. It disrupts our daily way of life. And on top of that, I thought we were trying to make Santa Monica safe. From what I understand, they're now hiring people that have been previously incarcerated. And you all know that the strike captain has already threatened myself and other residents with gang terrorism. So I'd like to know who these people are and why nothing is being done to protect us as citizens against them. And on top of that, who are they allowing to work in these hotels? You have people that come here for tourism. Are these pedophiles? Are these rapists? Like, who are they? And now, on top of that, they're giving extensive protections to people that are here illegally who aren't even vetted properly. And I'm all about people earning money the American way, but not while it puts us at risk. So I'm asking you to please put this up on the agenda before someone gets sued. And it's not a threat. We already instructed to sue Local 11, which we will do, but all parties involved as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Devlue. Anthony?
Good evening, city council. I am here again to address the issue with the protesters, with the obnoxious noise that are able to do whenever they feel like it, mainly in the morning to disturb the residents. But yet again, I'm trying to understand how they are able to go to work, collect a paycheck, interact with their guests, then come out and scream and yell and make all kinds of noise. Doesn't make too much sense to me. Plain and simple, this only affects the residents and disturbs our peace. I don't understand how the city of Santa Monica, who we pay one of the highest taxes in the state, doesn't care about its residents, but cares more about outsiders that don't live here. The city of Beverly Hills, whose taxes are less than Santa Monica, shut their protests down immediately. Obviously, they care about the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bubbles? All right. Sarah Lee? All right. And before you begin, Ms. Lee, I'm going to call the last two names, Harvey Edder and Jonathan Foster, if you can prepare to speak.
There's also Jill Hawkins that signed up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It didn't go all the way down. Yes. All right. And Jill Hawkins after Mr. Foster. So go ahead, Ms. Lee.
Okay. So I'm going to read you the definition of Santa Monica's general noise ordinance, okay? "It shall be unlawful for any person to make, produce, maintain, cause, or permit to be made any noises or sounds in such manner so as to unreasonably disturb the peace and quiet and comfort of persons of normal sensitivity within the area of audibility, or which are so harsh or prolonged or unnatural or unusual in their use, time or place, as to cause physical discomfort to any person of normal sensitivity within the area of audibility." So the range caps are 50 to 75 in neighborhoods, residential. So basically, I'm talking about the Fairmont Hotel and the strike. The strikers are like, we feel like we're at war. So we're completely traumatized, as the first speaker said. And so when they start up, like I put my heater on, I go in the shower, all that kind of stuff. I don't want to live like this and pay the kind of taxes we pay. The quality of our lives has gone down, really down. And we want it back. So we need you to, as this ordinance says, all of those things, we experienced all of them. All of the speakers experienced this. So we understand the First Amendment, you're allowed to make your point and have freedom of speech like I'm having right now. But I don't need to be amplifying. I don't need to harm your ears. I don't need to give you a headache. So this can be done at a lower rate, okay? And we're asking you put an ordinance in place, put this on the agenda. Whatever you need to do to make this happen is taking too long for them to resolve this, okay? So rules on society exist for a reason, to keep people safe and to ensure our rights as citizens against abuses by other people, organizations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Edder?
Good evening. I'm Harvey Edder. I'm speaking for myself and for the Public Solar Power Coalition. We've been around quite a while, almost half a century. I want to take the big picture here and look at, first, I want to incorporate by reference a video done on Soft White Underbelly of Me, 15 Minutes, in June of 2000, Homeless Man Santa Monica, Harvey, all right? Check it out. It's 15 minutes. We're supposed to do some follow-ups, and there's other things going on. Anyway, on climate, okay, there was, a week ago, a five-year report incorporating it by reference that's done by the federal government on climate, saying that the changes are happening a lot quicker, storms and all this stuff, and fires and whatnots happening more intense and quicker than we thought. And that's the way it is, sorry. And it's costing, just on that, $150 billion a year, that the fossil fuel system is inequitable and it's slamming poor people. I'm incorporating by reference economist French Picketty, his books from '14 and '20 on equity in this country, that there's been no increase in 60%, 70% in the last 40, 50 years. And there's been productivity increases of 70%. It's all gone to the top 1%, 1/10, 1/100, 1%. Okay. So also, James Hansen, this guy, he had storms. He was at Goddard Institute. He's now at Columbia. And he says, okay, also, the UN reports that we're already passing 1.5 now. The average that we've got in the last couple of weeks, we're over it. And we're hidden towards 3.2. And Hansen said, no, we got other stuff going on, and it's at least 4.3, and we got real problems, okay? But, okay, Hansen does not, there's a guy named out of Cambridge.
Thank you, Mr. Edder. Your time is up. Mr. Foster?
Hi, Jonathan Foster. It's going to go fast. You know, in Hamas and Israel, you know, in 800 A.D., the same thing happened. It's not new. The Foster family, we've been repelling Muslim terrorists since 1066. We've been involved in this for over 1,000 years. But just because they have tanks and jets and missiles doesn't mean the red thread is going to turn white. The red thread stopped turning white in 29 A.D. It still doesn't turn white. And just because they got bombs doesn't mean the whale oil burned for eight days. We know the whale oil burned for one day, like it always does. And Jesus Christ, the Holy Ghost, the light, burned for seven days. Jesus burned. It's the same light in the burning bush as Jesus, the Holy Ghost, not the whale oil. Jesus said, "I and the Father are one." Israel is the worldwide Christian church, not the man-made state of Israel, which I completely support bombing the shit out of Hamas until they're dead. But look at how both sides are acting. All I see is both sides hatred of Jesus. And do you think they're winning God's favor? Jesus put the ear back on the servant, right? The disciple chopped it off. Jesus put it right back on his head. This is how Jesus wants both sides to act. How does darkness mingle with the light? Jesus said, "Come away from them and be ye separate." And what they're doing in Gaza is about hostages. I get that. That's cool. But what they're doing in Gaza, if Jews could do this to the Christian church, they would destroy it like that. And I'm not insulting them. I'm trying to protect them. I'm not targeting them. I'm trying to tell them the truth. This is 10,000-plus people who died not knowing Jesus. Sad. 10,000 people who did not accept the gospel, all in darkness.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Madam Clerk, it looks like Ms. Hawkins' name was crossed out.
That's correct. She left.
All right. So that concludes item number one, and we will move on to item number two.
Item number two is public input on agenda items under closed session, special agenda items, and consent calendar only. And there's no public input permitted on any ordinances for second reading and adoption.
All right. And I see two speakers. Is that correct? All right. Those two speakers are Denise Barton and Harvey Edder.
And could they please tell us which items or which session you're speaking under?
Good evening. On item 5H, I don't think you can cancel one regular city council meeting without scheduling another one within the same month. And wouldn't it violate the city's charter, Section 611 regarding regular meetings, which reads, "The city council shall hold regular meetings at least twice a month, at such times as it shall be fixed by ordinance or resolution, and may adjourn or readjourn any regular meeting to a date certain, which shall be specified in the order of adjournment and written so adjourned. And when so adjourned, each adjourned meeting shall be a regular meeting for all purposes." Also, to change the city charter, doesn't it require a vote of the residents? So by changing "shall" to "may," I believe doesn't coincide with the city's charter. Now, why would you want to take away the public's right to speak, to disenfranchise the public? Because I have a hard time believing that you wouldn't have a quorum after the Christmas holiday, or any of the reasons I've heard, for the meeting being canceled on January 9, 2024, with no replacement. Or would this be being done to put the new mayor Phil Brock at more of a disadvantage? Or is this being done so you can further rationalize stepping the city council agenda, so the public can't speak on all the items they want to, as you still continue to deal with the consent calendar? So if you're claiming to be accountable to the people, if you claim to be accountable to people, why don't you be truthful and tell us what all the real reason you want to cancel a regular meeting and take this action, which violates Section 611 of the city's charter?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barton. Mr. Edder?
Hello again. My name is Harvey Edder. I'm talking for myself and for Public Solar Power Coalition, et cetera. On 5H, I don't remember the exact number. This thing about the electric, recharging electric vehicles and the ability to do so, all fine and good. But the question is, who's going to own it? Who's going to control it? Who's going to benefit from it? Key bono, all right? We work and we're instrumental in bringing you all to the Clean Power Alliance over 10 years ago. And part of what we put in the record is a study we did for the PUC 40 years ago, the Low Income Solar Equity Program, and how we, in the transition, and this was talked about back then, that we want to see vertically and horizontally integrated industries in solar and renewables, and that the ownership and control go to the communities and the unions and whatnot that work. The unions are getting a big push right now. So this ought to include equity. What was done with the auto workers should have included equity for 20%, 40% and extended out to the warehouses here, and that all this stuff that goes in, you have to have the complete cycle, that solar has to be, what they say is clean energy. It is not. This is 100% solar renewable, period. The law has to be changed and the definition of it. You can't put clean on your buses unless that's the case, and it isn't. All right? So we got to do stuff. We got to do stuff quickly. We've got extreme situation, and we've got to do it equitably and justly. And I'm incorporating by reference these podcasts that are talking about do stuff. And then in between that, we had to lean on fossil fuels for a number of 20, 50 years. This guy Nate Higgins, he talked at my school I went to, UC Santa Cruz, and talked about this stuff, says, "We've got to have fossil fuels. If we don't, if we stop using it for years, 40%, 80% in two years, this is garbage. And we're going to have a drop in the economy of 50%, 30%. And I fear that if solar won't work, it only provides 20% electric. That's garbage." You know, this, we, and there's a whole stuff going on.
Thank you, Mr. Edder. Thank you. I believe that concludes all the speakers for item two, so we'll close the public comment on item two, Madam Clerk. And that takes us to our special meeting, special agenda items. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Can you call 3A, please?
3A is commendation. It's Samo High Viking Marching Band.
All right. And Mayor Protem Negrete is going to take it away.
All right. We are, I'm going to do the commendation that I did at Friday night's game, and then we'll call Kevin McKeon and the marching band up afterwards. The commendation reads, "Whereas the marching band of Samo High is an integral part of American culture, these instrumental musicians provide entertainment and music through brass, woodwind, and percussion instruments, and help build school spirit and pride. And whereas the Samo High Viking Marching Band is one of the largest and most recognized ensembles at Santa Monica High School, its musicians and color guard perform at pep rallies, football games, and community events, and compete in field show competitions throughout Southern California. And whereas the Samo High Viking Marching Band has had an historic season placing first or sweepstakes winner in all five of its qualifying competitions. Because of their success, the band qualified for the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association 5A Division Field Championships. And whereas on November 18, 2023, the Samo High Viking Marching Band participated in the 5A Division Field Championships and received the Silver Medal out of the 12 final performing groups. The band's final score of 91.10 is the highest in school history. Therefore, Green Davis, Mayor of the City of Santa Monica, on behalf of the members of the city council, do hereby commend the Samo High Viking Marching Band for their outstanding performance at the division championships, and for their continued dedication and excellence of its talented members." We'll have you guys come up to take a picture. I just wanted to note that these kids come to school very early in the morning. They stay very late. They spend summers and breaks, and they work very hard. And we're all very proud of you. Thank you for representing our city.
Can we come and take a picture with you all?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was expecting a concert. Come on, Kevin.
That's right. I think she's down there with them. That's right.
Are you losing you?
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you. Congratulations. Pardon? Sure. Of course.
Love it. Celebrity.
All right. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Yeah, let's get through the commendations and we'll... All right. And now, Councilmember Para also has a celebration.
Can I stop for a second?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is just, this, sorry, you guys. This is just a procedure thing. So we need to recess the regular meeting and hear item 3A of the special meeting. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow, Ms. Anderson.
Sure. So I have the distinct pleasure tonight, if I can find my notes, to award a commendation to St. Monica Mariners. And for those of you that don't know, I'm a St. Monica parent, so I'm so extra, extra proud of you guys for the last 14 years. And we have St. Monica staff here along with Armon Senior. And so I'd like to commend the St. Monica Mariners. Whereas the St. Monica preparatory football team, known as the St. Monica Mariners, is a young team as a whole, starting with only five players at its first practice last year. It has now grown into a strong and capable team of 55, including many freshmen who have had an outstanding season. And whereas the St. Monica Mariners had an impressive season with an overall record of 11-3, averaging 33 points per game. Because of their success, the team advanced to the CIF Division 13 Championship Game, which was held on November 24th at Walnut High School. And whereas during the championship game, the St. Monica Mariners quickly jumped to a 14-0 lead as they were successful with their passing and running game. In the second half, their focus on defense prevented the Walnut Mustangs from overcoming their scoring deficit. And whereas the St. Monica Mariners wintered the playoffs without having won a CIF Southern Section title since 1998, achieved a stunning finish in the Division 13 Championship Game. And whereas, thanks to a determined team effort led by head coach Thomas Barnes, the St. Monica Mariners defeated the former Southern Section champions with a thrilling 28-21 victory. Now, therefore, on behalf of Glenn Davis, Mayor of the Santa Monica, City of Santa Monica, and on behalf of the members of the city council, do hereby commend the St. Monica Mariners for their outstanding performance in the division championship, for their sportmanship, and for the dedication in accomplishing this important victory. And at this time, I invite Coach Barnes up, if you'd like to say a few words, or Mr. Spellman. No, but Mike is yours.
Coach, come up too.
Yeah, come on, Coach.
You tell your players to be bold.
The city council, thank you so much for inviting us here this evening. It's an absolute pleasure and honor and to be part of this beautiful city. But here, standing before you, the people who lead and guide us, we are so honored. I, as the principal of St. Monica's, I'm so proud of our students. One, because academically, they're succeeding in the classroom. There's such fine men and women on this team to go out onto the field and just live the St. Monica spirit and make our city proud, and make their parents proud, make their principal proud, their coach proud, and their pastor proud. So thank you. I'm short-lived here, and I'll give it over to the coach.
First, I'd like to say thank you for the recognition of the team and just what they've accomplished. Obviously, we know the job is not done. We play again this Saturday. And I mean, I think this is awesome. This is, I mean, the kids were super excited on the way over here. Everybody was, you know, turned all the way up. You know, we had to turn them down just a little bit. I mean, I think that, I mean, the job's not done, so I'll just leave it right there.
Well, you know, we'll be there with you on Saturday night. Good luck. Absolutely.
A photo bomb. You guys all have to squat. That's all right. They don't care about us. We're the least important people in the picture.
Good luck with that.
You should just take a selfie this way.
Oh, you're taking a selfie? Congratulations.
They're taller than you are.
Saturday. Good luck.
Gentlemen, gentlemen in the back, you might have to lower down a little bit, please. Gentlemen in the back, can you please lower down a little bit? We want to see the city council.
Yeah, you gotta be able to see the coach.
Hold on now, one second.
Come on, Josh. You're young, so your knees can stand up. There you go.
It's harder for us to do squats. At least I've picked you for myself.
Yeah, get here. Get right here. Get right there, so you can be seen. Perfect. Perfect.
Hold on one minute.
He's coming over here.
Now, hold on one minute. Your coach is coming up here. Or he's going to the front somewhere. Good for you, Coach. Get in right here.
How you doing?
Good.
Watch it. People might start yelling at you when you're up here.
Turn all the way up. Where did you coach before?
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Good luck on Saturday. Yes. All right.
Hold it. Hold it, young man.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Hold on one minute, Lana.
You don't need to get lucky.
No, no, I was trying to get a picture. Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you. That's all right.
Yeah, this is the best part of the meeting. We love this.
Photo bomb.
Should we photobomb or photobomb you guys?
No, we're not gonna get in there.
That's all right. That's okay. All right. Yep, you got outed there, son. All right. Okay, so I am going to adjourn the special meeting. We are going to go on now with our regular meeting. And I am informed, Madam Clerk, that the four speakers that we currently have on agenda item six are all students. So I would like to move that we, in accordance with our council practice, hear the students at this point in time, so they do not have to wait for us to endure closed sessions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So I'm going, we're going to let the students speak right now. As we did before, I'm going to call all of your names. Please line up before you speak. Give us your name, so we know who you are, and tell us which item you're speaking on. I believe you're all on 16C, but we need to hear it from you. I don't want to make any assumptions. All right. Oscar De La Torre, Raden Madley, Maya Baker, and Alicia Lewis.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Oscar De La Torre. I'm team captain of the wrestling team, and I'm speaking on item 16C. I just want to say thank you for your support last year with the team. You guys helped make history. We sent, it was one of the first women's wrestlers to place in state. She got third, and that wouldn't have been possible without you guys' help. And I'm here asking for your continued support this year. You know, doing something like getting third in state, that takes a lot of discipline, dedication, resilience, and even leadership, and all of that's learned by participating on the wrestling team. And in a community as tightly knit as the wrestling team, right? We all try to hold, like, bring each other up, hold each other accountable to, you know, work towards our goals and be successful. And not only do we do that, like, in the team and on the mat, but outside the mat as well, in our academics. And not only does that stay in the wrestling team, but that's fostered through, you know, all of our peers, not only with people on the team, right? So that extends to, like, the entire Samo High community, right? And not only just the Samo High community, but we also have a kids' club where middle schoolers and elementary school kids, they come in and they learn wrestling and leadership skills and, like, athlete skills and stuff like that, and those same values that I talked about. And that just leaves a great impact, and we can't do any of that without the funding. You know, we're pretty underfunded, just like most athletic programs in high school. And we have to raise all our money, and your donation would help us continue to do all that, and it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De La Torre. Raden Madley.
Hello. My name is Raden Madley. I'm speaking on 16C. I've been in the wrestling program for three years now. I joined as a freshman, and we would be super appreciative for you guys to vote to donate to our wrestling team. As when I joined, I never planned on joining a sport, but as I got into it, it has improved my life and my well-being in so many positive ways. I've met so many great people, the amazing coaches, my great, my amazing team, and most of my friends are on the wrestling team. And I think that I would, this funding would not only benefit us, but the future of the wrestling program, as it could also positively help and positively grow other students that would join the program for years to come. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madley. Is it Maya or Mia?
Maya.
Maya Baker.
Hello. My name is Maya Baker, and I'm speaking on 16C. I've been part of the wrestling team for almost three years now, but it feels like a lifetime. I have learned to persevere and really fight for my goals. Our coaches tell us all the time that after wrestling, everything seems easier. That is not only true in physical, but mental aspects as well. The mindset that you develop is one that is tough and unshakable. Throughout my time in wrestling, I have been close with my team and the sport. Through wrestling, I have had so many extraordinary experiences and opportunities. From being the best athletes a sport has to offer to making close friends, it is truly a melting pot of unique people. Wrestling is a sport unlike many others in high school, and especially as a girl in this sport, I have watched the number of girls in my bracket grow bigger every year. Women's wrestling is a small sport, but is growing at a rapid pace. With so many high school developing girls' programs and now colleges, there are opportunities for me in the future because of the sport's growth. My dream is to continue on to wrestling college and to continue competing at a high level while I'm in high school. I'm grateful for the opportunity to go out and explore what this sport has to offer, but that is only possible with funding, because without funding, our team cannot afford to go to competitions. And that is the only way to get better, is to meet and face opponents that are better than us. That is the only way to grow, and that is why we would love to have your support and your donation would make it possible for these tournaments and this travel to be afforded. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Alicia Lewis.
Hello. My name is Alicia Lewis. I will be speaking on item 16C. I'm currently a senior attending Santa Monica High School wrestling team. I've done wrestling for four years, and in the beginning, I was timid and afraid as I was online. In the following year, I started to develop a relationship with the sport and my team. At school, I felt I didn't fit into groups of my peers. Wrestling surrounded by supporting varsity girls gave me a home to be more confident, not only by my sport, but also in my academics. I am able to de-stress from the chaotic life surrounded by coursework and problems with my peers. As a girls' team captain, I have witnessed several young women grow with the sport and find the same home I have found. As a sport not particularly popular, with the help of your donation, my team and I can continue to grow wrestling where many young women like me can dominate in. I want my peers to enjoy the space I have learned, grown, and mastered in. This sport is something I will be grateful for years coming, and I want to create the best opportunity for my team as we continue our 2024 season this year. Thank you for your time and listening to our TV.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. All right. I think that concludes all the student speakers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Apparently, Councilmember Brock would like the students to stand. Do you all mind having your picture taken? Lauren can take the picture, Phil, if you'd like. They'll just stand up all night and take pictures. All right. Thank you, and good luck. All right. I believe we are on to item four. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct. So we have the closed session. We have two items. We have an existing litigation, Dennis Littonen, Litton Meyer, versus City of Santa Monica. And then we have consideration, and then 4B is consideration appointment of unrepresented employee. The city negotiator is the mayor. The unrepresented employee is the city clerk/ interim city clerk. The conference labor negotiator is, the city negotiator is the mayor, and again, is interim, the unrepresented employee is the city clerk/ interim city clerk.
All right. And I will turn to the city attorney. Oh, you know what?
I didn't have none of mine either.
It's 3B. Yeah, it's buried. It's buried. You want to go stand in the well, and we'll take our picture with you? No, really. You know, I'm telling you, it's not on the city, not on the mayor's. It's not on the mayor's.
I can still do it.
I think Denise, on her way out, is giving you a message. All right. I apologize, Mr. City Manager.
Ready?
Yes. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. And no, I will not stand in the well for this presentation. So I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday weekend, and certainly it was enlivened by our wonderful high school sports, which was absolutely delightful to enjoy. I do have a lot to share tonight, so I'm gonna dive right in. For anyone who has not seen the press release just before Thanksgiving, the California Housing and Community Development Department officially certified the city's compliance with the Surplus Lands Act for the Civic Auditorium site. This means that the city could now consider proposals for the site from any interested party. We will be evaluating options for the future of the site, along with next steps, and we'll share more information when it becomes available. I also want to let everyone know about two rent control seminars taking place in December. I also want to let everyone know about two rent control seminars taking place in December. The first will be a tenant seminar in Spanish on Wednesday, December sixth, from six thirty to eight P.M. at the Thelma Terry Building at Virginia Avenue Park. It will include information about services available through the rent control office, as well as help with issues related to rent, amenities, and maintenance. The second will be the annual landlord-tenant forum on December twelfth, from nine thirty to eleven A.M., also at the Thelma Terry Building. This will be a joint presentation of the Consumer Protection Division of the City Attorney's Office, thank you, City Attorney, and rent control for property owners and managers, tenants, and city staff to discuss hot topics, including source of income discrimination, rules for repayment of outstanding COVID-19 rental debt, and much, much more. Many thanks to the team for putting on such a helpful program through the lens of equity and inclusion by being present at Thelma Terry. The holidays are absolutely in full swing here in Santa Monica, and there is so much going on around town. I'd like to share with you just a few things happening this very weekend. There will be a holiday celebration during the Pico Farmers Market at Virginia Avenue Park this Saturday, December second, from nine A.M. to one P.M., put on by the Pico Business Improvement District. Also on Saturday morning, the Santa Monica Firefighters and Police Officers Associations are holding their annual candy cane drive, a beloved community tradition. And Downtown Santa Monica Inc. is holding a holiday pop-up market on Saturday, including free pet photos with Santa. And next Thursday, December seventh, is the start of Hanukkah. There will be nightly menorah lightings on the fourteen-hundred block of the Third Street Promenade at sundown, and the final lighting ceremony will take place at ICE at Santa Monica Skating Rink from four to five P.M. on Thursday, December fourteenth, with the actual lighting happening at four forty-five P.M. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to invite you all to join us at a ribbon-cutting celebration on Saturday from nine A.M. to noon, celebrating the completion of the Safe Streets for Seventeenth Street and Michigan Avenue project. Enjoy donuts, local musicians and performers, bike rides along the project, and remarks from our very own Mayor Davis, and I hope to see you all there. Speaking of safe streets, we're hard at work on the action items that came out of the Vision Zero sixteen item discussion at the last council meeting. We've updated our website to make it easier for the community to request, to request stop signs and lights, and we're working on ways to communicate clearly to the public how the process works to evaluate requests. And as of yesterday, we've installed additional stop signs at the intersection at Nineteenth Street and Idaho Avenue, as well as cross-traffic-do-such-stop signage at Idaho and Eighteenth Street and Idaho and Twenty-first Street. As a city, we remain truly committed to ensuring a safe, sustainable, and connected community with a transportation network that works for all roadway users. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And again, I apologize for skipping over you. All right. Now, Mr. City Attorney, we are going to go to closed session. We don't, you've already called it, Madam Clerk. Is that correct? So I will turn to you and ask, at what time do you think we will reconvene?
Let's try seven fifteen.
All right. We will see you all at seven fifteen.
We'll just grab some food in there.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, you guys are having entirely too much fun. We are going to reconvene the meeting. And I will turn to the city attorney for a report out from closed session.
Yes, all items were heard. And also pleased to report that in light of the city clerk's upcoming retirement, Nikki Newsom is being appointed by the council as the interim city clerk at step three effective upon the city clerk's retirement or December 28, 2023.
All right, thank you so much. All right, I think we are moving on to the animal shelter. No, it's a kitty cat. All right. So this is Griselda. She is a seven-year-old spayed cat. Her owner unfortunately passed away and other family members were not able to take her in. So she has been at the shelter since November 8. She's very loving and a sweet girl who enjoys lots of pets and attention. But she's also a huge couch potato who just loves to hang out in bed and watch the birds fly by. Griselda is social and would benefit from having another playful cat in the house. She is current on all her shots and is microchipped. If you're interested in adopting Griselda, please visit the Santa Monica Animal Shelter or call 310-458-8595 to schedule an appointment. I also want to note that it's still Tuesday, but it's Giving Tuesday. And the Santa Monica Animal Shelter Foundation is a wonderful place to send your Giving Tuesday donations. They have a lot of animals, some of whom have been there for a very long time. And every dollar makes the lives of those animals being held in the shelter more pleasant. In addition, if you're not able to adopt Griselda or some of the other animals who might be there, but you do have a fur baby at home and you use the chewy.com app, you can always go on the chewy.com app and use their donation button and donate to the Santa Monica Animal Shelter Foundation. It is tax deductible and they have a list there of all the items they need, one of which is always kitty food because the kitties like to eat. So please, there's Griselda. We hope she'll find a wonderful home. All right, I will turn it over to Ms. Anderson Warren, who will ask the $64 question.
Do any council members have anything to report on travel since the last meeting?
Yes, I attended the National League of Cities Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, a week ago. I sit on the Public Safety and Anti-Crime Committee and also the Council on Families, Education, and Youth. And attended both meetings. I stressed especially to the Public Safety Committee the need for national mental health help on our streets, that it wasn't all about crime. It was, however, about the need to stabilize people who are on our streets desperate, turning the drugs. And this is not only Santa Monica or LA. This is a national crisis. And I was emphatic that whether you're from Missouri or North Carolina or Texas or North Dakota, there are needs there. And the federal government needs to step in and start helping. So that was one of my points. I was listening to the ATF once again talk about how they can identify ballistics better. And they needed to put more money into that. And I said, damn it, why aren't we putting money into stopping people from wanting to use guns? Why aren't we putting money into helping our youth when they're young? And someone raised their hand from another city and said, well, when they're 14? And I said, no, that's way too late. Help kids when they're six, seven, eight, nine years old. So that was one part. In addition to that, there were several really, really dynamic speakers, including the lady who wrote the new follow-up book as well. So we talked about syringe exchanges in parks and streets and things that she had written about in her book and the crisis that she sees around her. So overall, it was extremely productive. It is always really good hearing ideas from other cities, from other city council members, other mayors throughout the nation, and hearing what they're going through and trying to find solutions together. So it was beneficial. I thank the residents of Santa Monica for having confidence in letting me go to this conference. I think it was really productive. And I tried to advance the issues that I think are on the ground in our city that aren't caused by our city, that are caused by society and that we need to help solve. Thank you.
All right. I think that takes us on to item five, Madam Clerk, the consent calendar.
Item five is the consent calendar. All items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion. In accordance with Charter Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a council member present dissents. And there is no public discussion permitted on ordinances and second reading for adoption. And also, there is a special meeting of the financing authority. And I would ask if the council would like to combine the City Council Public Financing Authority item and the consent calendar together.
So moved.
Second.
All right, do we need to take a voice vote? Ms. Anderson?
No, we can do it by roll call.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes, you can.
We have to do a voice vote, though, to combine the meetings. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we are now sitting as the public financing authority as well.
Okay, let me call the roll. Authority Member Zwik.
Yes.
Authority Member Parra.
Yes.
Authority Member Brock.
Yes.
Authority Member Terosus.
Here.
Authority Member De La Torre.
Here.
Chair Protim Nigrete.
Here.
And Chair Davis.
Here.
Mayor, before you ask the question, as far as the consent calendar, I don't have, I didn't receive any items to be pulled.
All right, is there any item that any council member would like to pull that the clerk was not informed of?
I guess I didn't appropriately notify the clerk, but I would like to ask some questions about 5F.
5F? As in Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
F as in Frank.
All right, so I'll enter, any other? Don't see anybody else. I'll entertain a motion for the entirety of the consent calendar with the exception of item 5F.
I move all other items to step 5F.
All right, moved by Brock, seconded by Zwik. Maybe have a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Yes. Authority Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
Authority Councilmember Terosus.
Yes.
Chair Mayor Protim Nigrete.
Here, sorry.
Authority Member Brock.
Here.
I'm sorry, Authority Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Authority Councilmember Parra.
Yes.
Authority Councilmember Zwik.
Yes.
And Chair Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero. All right, item 5F.
Item 5F, pulled by Councilmember Terosus, is award contract to Green Wealth for the installation, operation, and maintenance of designated public electric vehicle chargers.
Yeah. So I appreciate staff answering some preliminary questions. I think myself, I don't want to speak for Councilmember Parra, but we both had some questions. It might be instruct, is it possible to give us like a very brief staff report?
Sure, yes, I'm sorry, did not.
Oh, it doesn't need to be a presentation, but I think just so that for people watching, for all of us here, we can all be on the same page.
Sure, so the agreement before you is a proposal to outsource the operation and maintenance of 49 non-networked chargers in cities' parking structures, six, nine, and civic center. And have that operation and maintenance be taken over by an organization called Green Wealth. The purpose of this would be to enhance access to our electric vehicle charging. Currently, the city is responsible for operation, maintenance of our charge point stations. Oftentimes, there is a significant delay and stations are down for a long period of time. So we released a RFP for a vendor who could help us increase the, or shorten the amount of time that our charging stations are down so that we can better serve our residents, visitors, and employees who use electric vehicles. As you well know, the city is committed to achieving carbon neutrality by 2050 or sooner. A key foundation of that effort is to procure 100% green power and then to electrify our buildings and our vehicles. So this is an effort to electrify our vehicles and to provide a consistent, well-operated and maintained electric vehicle charging system. The reason that we are targeting these three locations for this project is because these are our remaining non-networked chargers in the city. So these non-networked chargers do not allow, they're what was historically referred to as dumb chargers. It's not a term that we use anymore, but it is, it means that these chargers don't allow us to charge a user fee. They don't allow us to get charger-specific utility usage. And so this is our effort to bring networked chargers to the city, to increase the EV driver experience, and to do it at no cost to the city. So the way that this works is the city outsources the operations and maintenance to Green Wealth. Green Wealth pays the electricity fee, they pay the operations, the maintenance, and then they profit share with the city and repay us for the cost of the electricity use for each electric vehicle. That's the basic summary. And I just wanted to reiterate again, it's a no-cost contract to the city and that it's 49 chargers that currently are non-networked.
So do we have an estimate of how much additional revenue this might bring into the city since these are currently non-networked and we have 49 that are becoming part of the network?
So what we anticipate at this point is that a minimum of $40,000 would come back to the city in electricity charges. It's about $15,000, yeah, it's 40, a minimum of $40,000 in electricity charges that we don't recoup currently.
Annually?
Correct.
Okay. And then just because I have to ask this, I think you might remember, you know, skilled and trained labor requirements are very important to me, especially as we're moving forward with the new green infrastructure build-out of the future. And we're trying to create quality job opportunities while we're doing that. Does Green Wealth work with any union employees or contractors?
I share your passion for this topic and think it's really important for us to integrate this. The specific recommendations, certifications that the council recommended in your 16 item, those were not written into the RFP because staff is still developing that policy. My office reached out to other California cities who are also working to integrate these certifications into municipal projects. And staff from Architecture Services are working right now to bring you an information item in a proposed resolution. So you should be receiving that from the council, excuse me, you should be receiving that from staff. But because of the timing of that proposal coming back to you and this RFP being released, we didn't write that requirement into the RFP. So I can't, we can't require it of Green Wealth, but we are aware that that is a priority.
Would there be any opportunity to work with Green Wealth to at least encourage them to use state-certified electricians and folks who have technical expertise in doing this work?
Absolutely. I contacted them about that. We also, they're a good resource, as are others in the contracting community, to really help us understand how to onboard a requirement of this type in future RFPs because we're looking at the existing levels of certification in the contracting community and wanting to make sure that we scaffold around this requirement so that our local craftsmen are able to meet the requirement.
And then just And then, just in terms of our long-term sustainability with this outsourcing plan, is this what we're planning on doing into the future as we build out our EV infrastructure? Are we going to continue to outsource, or do we ever have any plans to bring these types of jobs in-house?
I think that's an excellent question, and this, this contract is an effort on our part to gather data to be able to answer that more thoughtfully. Ultimately, there is, there are a lot of staff costs in coordinating operations and maintenance of an electric vehicle fleet, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, as well as a very nuanced electric vehicle electricity market. So we are still figuring out what will ultimately be most cost-effective and allow us to achieve both our environmental sustainability goals as well as our local economy and social equity outcomes. I would suspect that at the end of this, we'll have a much better understanding of how to answer that question.
Okay, that's great, because I'm under, obviously, this is an emerging, I hate to use that word, it's emerged, but it's still an emerging technology and infrastructure. So I appreciate you answering the questions and thanks for hearing me out on my priorities here.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Brock.
Okay, so are we keeping ChargePoint and they're assuming operations of it, or are we eliminating ChargePoint?
We will still have ChargePoint chargers at our facility, at our Level 2 charging stations across the city. Green Wealth will be managing the operations and maintenance. The physical charger that they install is actually a ChargePoint charger.
So, and, and I had experience with a ChargePoint charger. I've used a few of them around the city now that I have an electric car. And I've loved the fact that my car manufacturer, ChargePoint, is one of the, is the Level 2 free charging. And Level 3, unfortunately, there is no, they don't have free chargers in Santa Monica, the nearest to Century City. But ChargePoint, the other day, I was at Santa Monica Place, and has it hooked in to my car, a notice came on both my app and at the pump that rather than being free, starting in three hours, Santa Monica Place was going to start charging $1 per minute for charging. Yes, that's exactly what I did. Now, I only stayed there like 25 minutes, but I was just really surprised that they were going to do that. So for the people who charge for free now in Santa Monica, you're saying they will no longer be able to do that? Is that what you're saying, that Green whatever will now add their cost into it, so we're actually raising prices on residents? Or am I incorrect?
I, I do not want to speak to your experience with that particular charger because I'm not 100% certain what happened.
That's okay. That was the first floor of Santa Monica Place, as you ran into the parking structure off Broadway and Fourth the other day. I was sort of shocked, especially a dollar a minute.
I'm surprised by that as well, and that's why I want, I don't want to comment because I, it's outside what I would expect.
Right, let's talk in generality, but what I'm asking is, is the price for people who use those chargers, are you saying that's going to climb where it either was free or at a low cost?
So the.
In which case it's a detriment to residents. Regardless of, sorry, one more.
Yeah, of course.
Comma and sent, and a partial sense, it's a detriment, it's a detrimental increase to residents. And the amount of revenue to the city, $40,000, but when we want people to buy electric cars and do more charging.
So previously, council established the EV user fee to offset a portion of the cost of electric vehicle charging to the city. In the early days of electric vehicles, the city provided free electric vehicle charging for municipal fleet, for residents, for visitors, and that, that was an important part of our effort to normalize electric vehicle usage. But there did come a point where the cost to the city to provide free electric vehicle charging was, was significant. And the, we came to council, we had a study session, we talked about an EV user fee, and we established an EV user fee that is significantly lower than the cost to drive a fossil fuel polluting vehicle that allowed the city to recoup a portion of the cost to the city to provide this ultimately vehicle fuel source. The EV charger fee does not allow us to recoup 100% of the cost of having, providing electric vehicle charging, but it allows us to offset a portion. Utility rates are changing, but I think that, that was important. The other decision that council made at that time was to create an EV user fee, to also create an EV overstay fee. So that was a fee that is if you fill your vehicle to capacity.
And you leave the car there for four hours.
Yeah, that, that's right. And so we want, we created a fee that allowed, once vehicles are fully charged, you have a grace period, and then you need to move your vehicle. And so those two fees did go into, to effect. The cost of electricity has increased since those fees were put in place, and so they offset a smaller portion of the total cost of the electric vehicle market. But we do not provide free electric vehicle charging in the city.
Out of curiosity, since I didn't have an electric vehicle, so I must not have been as paying close, rapt attention when we went through that. How much was the city spending each year?
I think the to, the total cost last year to, for the electric vehicle program is $237,000.
Okay.
Exclusive of staff time.
And we assume we will now recoup $40,000?
No, that $40,000 is simply what we'll recoup. This is a very.
By switching the system.
This is, I, I really want to reiterate that this is not a system-wide change. This is 49 chargers in three parking lots. So it's a very, it's a small subset of our chargers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Parra.
Thank you. Thank you for helping by responding to my questions. I unfortunately got them while I was driving here, so I'm just now seeing them, so forgive me if some of my questions are a little repetitive. But one of the things that, there were, so the question that I had asked and was, the staff report indicates that we will review the annual fee schedule, but it doesn't say anything about how we will monitor use and fees collected. And then my question was, will we receive reports or bills from Clean Alliance that will then be passed on to Green Wealth? And then the response was, Green Wealth will reimburse the city for electricity costs incurred by their EV chargers at all locations. And then the second answer was, the city will receive regular reports on EV charger usage, fee collection, and maintenance status. So who will those reports come from, or how, where will that information come from? Is that coming from Green Wealth?
Yes, so Green Wealth will, the, the ChargePoint charger will collect, they collect all that data. That's the value of replacing these 49, 49 non-networked chargers. They can't tell us any information.
Any info, yeah.
Once we network them, they can, they can give us all this information. Green Wealth will aggregate that across the 49 chargers and report that to my office. I have a staff member on my team, Arianna Beto, who's presented to you fairly recently, and she, she will review that data.
That data, okay. So that was one of the questions I had. Let's see here, I'm sorry.
So I, I really appreciate that you didn't try to read them while driving.
No, it just, you know, it's just, you know, I recognize that by having a third party, you know, run the program, that it'll, you know, it'll be more effective, right, for the end user and for also staff, right? But I just had some concerns about handing over this program, even though it's a small subset, which, let me back up a little bit. How many, when you say this is a small subset, can you go back and explain how many chargers we have throughout the city?
Yes. So we have 178 standard Level 2 chargers that are owned by the city and 28 DC fast chargers that are owned by EV Go.
Okay. Okay. So this is like a third, essentially, right?
Yeah, of the non-networked.
Of the non, right. Okay.
I should say this is the final section of non-networked chargers that will, so we will have a completely networked electric vehicle charger system.
Okay.
If you choose to get this out.
And then understanding that this is a no-cost contract, if you will, and that Green Wealth is taking over, you know, all costs at this point, and obviously, they've baked it into the, the price to fuel up, if you will. And this contract is for five years. So at the end of the five years, let's say we want to go a different direction, don't want to go with them, is there going to be any liability from the city to Green Wealth? Are these chargers ours now? How does, how is this going to work?
So, yeah, we have, we have the, over the five years, we'll be collecting a lot of this information and data that we were discussing earlier, so the use amounts, the user fees, the electricity costs, and then at the end of the five years, we'll review that data and decide, do we want to release an RFP for this service again, or do we have a different proposal that we would come to council for, to manage the, what is only going to be a growing electric vehicle infrastructure market? I think the key piece for understanding how this works for them, how this is no cost to the city, is that they set a user fee that is consistent with user fees across the region. So they won't, you know, skyrocket in prices, really. Price, making sure that the cost to charge does not become a barrier to entry to the electric vehicle market is very important to my team, to you, to our city. It's built into our EV action plan and to our sustainable city plan. So this contract was developed with that in mind. The way that the contractor, Green Wealth, how they fund this is that they take the low-carbon fuel standard credits and they keep that revenue.
They keep that revenue?
Yeah, and then they provide 20% of that total revenue back to us.
Okay. So then, so then, okay, so that's why, we're trying to, I was trying to wrap my head around, how are they doing this at no cost?
Yeah.
And, you know, and so they're trying to figure out where the, the capital or the revenue, you know, that they would gain come, you know, would come from.
They're monetizing the LCFS credit and then, which, and that's part of why you see that we can't give you an exact dollar amount because that carbon market's fluctuating.
Okay. And so then, but, but my question about the replacement of the dumb chargers and then any other ones that break down or what have you during the course of the five years, at the end of that contract, those are, those belong to the city. They don't, they don't stay with Green Wealth, or we don't have to pay them out.
Physical charging structure, physical charging infrastructure stays in the city.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Brock.
So is there a max that we put on Green Wealth as far as charging, amount they charge, not? In other words, are we capping their amounts to make sure that they are low enough cost that it doesn't impede someone from charging their car?
Yeah, the, the RFP required them to remain within the standard regional fee. Yes, there, yes, there is, there are, each individual city has set its own user fee. Those user fees are slightly off each other, but they're, they are required to stay within that regional average. So it can't, they can't suddenly spike to $17.
Can't spike to a dollar a minute.
I, I don't want to speak to the dollar a minute because it's really confusing me, and I try hard not to talk about things I don't know.
Yeah. No, it freaked me out. I went, what? Because it was in a shopping mall that I would think they would be drawing more business because while those people are charging, they're hopefully also shopping.
I share that observation.
So there are a cap based upon other comparable cities?
Correct.
What is the high and the low right now?
I, I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. Actually, and I don't want to give you misinformation. I think it's listed in here, I think it's .05, yeah, .35, right? It's .35 to .49 cents per kilowatt hour, which is not really translatable to human speak, which is.
And then I had one other, I had one other quick question. As you mentioned, we had 20 some odd high-speed chargers?
We have 20 DC fast chargers that are owned by EV Go.
By who?
EV Go.
Ah, so the ones in the 1300 block of Fifth Street?
Correct.
Are city, on city land, city-owned?
Owned by EV Go.
EV Go.
Correct.
Okay. We need lights on in that parking. There are no streetlights. I know the electricity's going in the cars, but it also needs to go into streetlights there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any other questions. Does someone want to make a motion regarding 5F? Moved by Parra.
Second.
All right, seconded by Torosis. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson Warren?
He already took public comment on this. He said he wanted to speak, that's why. We already took public comment on the, on the consent calendar items.
On all the items.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already, you're not on the list, Mr. Foster.
I don't see anybody.
Oh, he shows, he wasn't there before, but now he's showing up on item two, but he wasn't there before, there were only two speakers on item two before.
But that would have been on the consent item, under.
Right, and we're on the consent calendar right now, but he wasn't there before, there were only two speakers.
Right, the comment, that was done before you guys went to closed session.
Right. But when did he get added? Can you tell?
He may have, no, I can't tell.
Because you weren't on the list when we called item two.
Right.
Mr. Foster, the clerk and I'll figure this out for a second.
It's past, it's, it's past the point, at this point.
Yeah, I think you signed up too late because when we called item two, there were only two speakers on the list and your name was not on it.
Correct.
You're, you're one of our regulars, so you know how we rule. Mr. Foster, we're not, we're not going to get in an argument with you.
It, it, from this list, it appears that you signed up after item two closed.
And actually, it would have been after item six.
Pardon?
It would have even been after we heard the students because he wasn't.
Right, right, because we heard the students before we went into closed session as well, and his name wasn't on that list.
Harvey Etter was speaking.
Mr. Foster, we're not going to do this. So I'm sorry, I apologize, but you signed, you signed up after the item that you signed up for had closed. We'd already heard all the speakers and your name was not on the list. Mr. Foster, I'm sorry. Your name just pops up here, but we went over it before. The clerk and I confirmed there were only two speakers, and you show up as the third speaker.
Well, I signed up.
Okay. Are you following?
You can write it in writing.
Right. I mean, if there's any, you can certainly send us emails. I believe the rule is that once we call the item, it's closed to new speaker. So if Harvey Etter was speaking, then it was already closed to new speakers. I think that's the problem we're having here, is once, for example, on item two, when item two calls and any speaker begins speaking, there's no new speakers added to the list.
And mayor, you actually ask, when we get to the end of items, you ask me, are there any other speakers? And there were no speakers.
Right, right. We always confirm that with the clerk, are there, because sometimes people do pop up, and in fact, we had that earlier on item one with Ms. Hawkins, who then left, but, so the clerk and I always make sure that we're in agreement that everyone who signed up in a timely manner has had an opportunity. It appears you did not sign up in a timely manner. If there's a comment you'd like to make, we certainly can take it in writing via email.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion by Councilmember Parra and seconded by Councilmember Torosis.
Yes, we do. We'll need a roll call vote, please.
Okay, and you guys can all push your buttons. Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes.
Councilmember Torosis. Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Zwick?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that matter passes seven to zero. And thank you, Ms. Perry. We appreciate your coming in and giving us all the great information. All right, that completes the consent calendar. I think that moves us to the sixteen items.
Yes, the first sixteen item is a request of Human Services Commission to declare the commissioner's seat vacant, and the commissioner is David Pissara due to an abs- due to absenteeism, absenteeism, and lack of communication from the incumbent.
All right, um, I will move that we declare David Pissara's seat.
Mayor, I'm sorry, don't we need to take public comment on these items, on remaining items, item six?
We have, yes, but we have no speakers.
Oh, we have no speakers.
Okay, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
We cleared out all the speakers beforehand. All right, yes, now we, yeah, we, we don't have any, yeah, I guess for the record, I should say we took all the item six, agenda item six speakers prior to going into closed session because all of the timely speaker chits were from students. So we, uh, according to our practice, we let the students go early. So there are no additional speakers. So that moves us on to the sixteen item. Um, I will move that we declare Commissioner, uh, David Pissara's seat on the Human Services Commission vacant.
Second.
Second.
All right, moved by Davis, seconded by Negrete, may we, we can just do this by voice vote, right? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. That takes us to item sixteen B.
Sixteen B is request of council members, I'm sorry, Councilmember Terosis, Councilmember Zwick, and Mayor Davis to allocate ten thousand dollars of council discretionary funds for the Girls Central Rockstar Kids and Peace Camp community programs operated by local multi-faith nonprofit church in Ocean Park. And those pro- those programs seek to empower youth, particularly girls, children with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged youth through a variety of programs that promote education, community building, and leadership skills.
All right, Councilmember Terosis.
Sure, I think that, um, many of us are familiar with the Church in Ocean Park, which has been a central pillar of our community, um, welcoming, open, and inviting to, to all facets of the community. And specifically, these programs are serving our youth. I, many also might be aware that during the pandemic, uh, the Church in Ocean Park was, was not able to, to remain open. And so does that gathering place. And now as the programs are restarting, um, it's really important that we support them as a council. Uh, it's not just a financial investment, it's a commitment to our youth and fostering an environment where our youth can flourish despite their challenges. It's also a commitment to the betterment of our community. Uh, and I, I encourage all of your aye votes on this.
All right, did you want to add anything, Councilmember Zwick?
Just to reiterate that, um, uh, the Church in Ocean Park has a long history of serving the community and, and doing so in an inclusive, uh, manner. And that I think these programs are worthy of our support.
Right, and I think we just need to make it clear, this is not money for religious programming. This is programming that serves youth and persons with disabilities that happen to be administered by the church. So, um, any questions, any comments? Not seeing any? Would someone like to make a motion? All right, moved by De La Torre, seconded by Terosis. Because it's money, I think we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Zwick?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero. That takes us to the next item.
Mayor, can you press your button, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next we have sixteen C, which is request of Mayor Potem Negrete and Councilmembers Brock and Parra that the city council allocate five thousand dollars of the discretionary fund to the, to San Mo co-ed wrestling team, a five-oh-one C-three. The funding will be used to offset costs related to transportation, tournament fees, lodging for out-of-town tournaments, and equipment, thereby allowing all students on the team to participate in all activities for the season.
All right, who's leading on this one?
I'd like to, I'd like to recuse myself on this item. My, my son is the captain of the wrestling team and I just want to make sure that we, uh, are above board on, on those types of conflicts. And so, uh, for, for that reason, I'd like to recuse myself.
All right.
Are you going to your car?
It is the last item on the agenda.
Yeah.
He took his keys.
All right, uh, Mayor Potem Negrete, were you going to kick this off?
Yes, I think we heard, um, some of the wrestling team members here tonight. Um, and as they mentioned, most of our sports programs are underfunded, unfortunately. Um, and wrestling just happens to be one of those sports that aren't as popular as maybe say football, um, basketball, or soccer. And so they, um, oftentimes are really underfunded. And tournaments are just one part of the cost, um, that these kids are constantly having to fundraise for. It is a public school and not all of the parents and families have the ability to pay for a lot of these fees for tournaments. But there's also, um, other fees related to, um, the travel, which, um, can get really expensive. And that has to do with buses and whatnot, out-of-town lodging. Um, and then also, um, I've found out that equipment, as well as an issue that they have, um, have to continuously replace and are continuously fundraising for. So five thousand dollars, I think, goes a long way for them and, um, we did it last year. So anyone else have anything else to say? I also just want to point out, I watched some of the girls wrestle and I wasn't even aware that we had such a robust girls wrestling team. So it was really awesome to see them.
All right, Councilmember Brock, did you want to add anything?
Just that I, well, as president of San Mo High Alumni, I probably shouldn't weigh in.
All right.
But I don't think I need to recuse, but I should necessarily weigh in.
Council, Councilmember Parra.
Well, I'm not president of the alumni, so I can. But, um, for all the reasons that, uh, Mayor Potem Negrete, um, indicated, I think it's just really important that we, uh, whenever we can, support, um, our teams and our public school system as much as we can so they can continue to develop, um, out the programs and just give opportunity to, to be able to have these experiences. And as, as the young people that were here earlier today spoke so eloquently about, uh, what it meant for them, uh, to be a part of the team, I think that was just, it was something that I didn't expect. Um, when they spoke to, um, their confidence, uh, and their, their school family and, and, uh, the connections that they have and that those are their best friends and their friends. And just, it was just really heartwarming to hear. And so I want to be a part of that. And, um, anything that we can do to support, I'm all in. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Not seeing any other quest- questions or comments. Would someone like to make a motion?
Like to move this item.
All right, moved by Negrete, seconded by Parra. Since it is money, may we have a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson Warren?
Councilmember Zwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes. All right, that passes six to zero. And I believe that is the last item on the agenda, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so I do sadly have a couple of adjournments. So let me start out. Uh, we would like to adjourn this evening in memory of Seje Inatsugu. It's with great sadness that we adjourn this council meeting in memory of longtime Santa Monica resident Seje Inasugu, who passed away peacefully at the age of eighty-three on November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, after a long illness. He was born in Japan and came to the United States in nineteen sixty-four as a graduate student studying at the University of Hawaii East West Center, where he studied engineering and earned a PhD in physics with a focus on lasers. That's where he met his wife Barbara, who was the undergraduate in political science. They were married in nineteen sixty-eight, one year after the Supreme Court's loving decision, which allowed interracial marriage for the first time. In the mid nineteen seventies, he co-founded Los Angeles Space Laser Media and became known for making fundamental breakthroughs in laser display technology. His work could be seen in Epcot Center in Florida, Stone Mountain in Georgia, and any of a variety of concerts during the last three decades of the twentieth century. In nineteen eighty-two, he moved his family from Hawaii to Santa Monica. He chose Santa Monica because he heard it had excellent public schools, and he was right. Ultimately, both children and all six grandchildren have attended or are attending Santa Monica schools. Seje was a recipient in nineteen ninety of the International Laser Display Association's Second Annual Career Achievement Award for Outstanding Contributions to the Industry and was hailed for a long list of technical contributions to the laser display industry. Seje and Barbara formed a lifelong partnership. Through her, he learned the value of non-paid volunteer civic engagement and his role in American life. And he valued her work supporting our schools, both through employment in the SMMUSD Superintendent's Office and through her volunteerism with the Santa Monica Malibu PTA Council and PTA at the regional and California state levels. He was particularly proud of Barbara's work with the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica and the League of Women Voters of California. And even when Barbara was elected president of the League of Women Voters of California in two thousand and one, and she had to travel away from home often, uh, especially in the two years following nine eleven by air, uh, his support for her civic engagement never wavered. In fact, because of the intensity of her work, he cooked for the family the entire time with no complaints. He never regretted the decision to move to Santa Monica, but also, not only for education, but also for the services available to seniors as he aged and he needed ready access to quality medical care. Another fundamental aspect of Seje and Barbara's love for what Santa Monica has to offer has been their ability to rescue animals and incorporate them into what they call their family pack. Over the years, their family pack has included green iguanas, water dragons, a boa constrictor, ball pythons, cats, and of course, five dogs, all rescues, and an African leopard totus. He's dearly missed by family and friends. He is survived, of course, by his wife Barbara, his children Erica, Narumi, and grandchildren AJ, Noah, Mikey, Colin, Sterling, and Malaya. And we'd like to extend our deepest condolences to his family during this incredibly difficult time. Again, sadly, we'd also like to adjourn this evening in memory of Frank Morales. Uh, Frank Morales passed away on November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. He was a transit mechanic, two body shop tech, former Teamster local nine-eleven chief steward, and big blue bus maintenance steward. Frank joined the city of Santa Monica and served the community for over thirty years. He always went above and beyond, serving as facilitator for fabricating or repairing equipment across all departments in the city of Santa Monica. Frank was born in Los Angeles. He loved traveling to Bullhead City, Arizona, and Laughlin, Nevada. He loved spending time in his home in Bullhead and playing poker machines in Laughlin. He loved building things like stair handrails and creating roses out of metal for his wife. His love for mariachi music brought tears to his eyes. He was an avid student activist in Los Angeles who participated in the walkouts that took place in nineteen sixty-eight, a time of deep civil unrest and social movements in the United States and around the world. But Frank was firm in his convictions and held the post of chief steward and big blue bus steward as a member of Teamster's local nine-eleven. Frank was a family man and was extremely proud of being one. His family was always a top priority. He is survived by his wife of fifty-two years, Maria Morales, his two daughters Christina and Elena Morales, his granddaughter Lonnie Morales Guerrero, and his son-in-law Jorge Guerrero. And on behalf of the city of Santa Monica, we of course want to extend our deepest condolences to Frank's family. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting is the regular meeting on Tuesday, December twelfth, at five-thirty PM. And we will see you all there. Thank you.